Study session, which is the 65th Street Multi-Unit Residential Project.
Good evening, Commissioners. So yes, this is 65th Street Multi-Unit Residential. This is the first time you're seeing this. It's a 24-unit building proposed on 65th Street. This would be east of Hollis, between 65th Street and the private Peabody Lane, just west of Vallejo Street, which jogs here in a funny little way. So for the project overview, it's a 24-unit residential building. They're proposing 15 two-bedroom units and nine three-bedroom units with 42 automobile parking spaces. So issues to consider tonight are which public benefits should be included for them to achieve their bonus points, feedback on design, not of no design, but feedback on design of project and design of units. Are the setback variances justified in this circumstance? And are there any considerations for transportation, circulation, or parking? So this photo is a little bit out of date from 2011 from Street View, but this is facing south on 65th Street. And here is from Peabody Lane, facing across the far side there is 65th Street, on the other side Baker Metal Building. This is a middle property between the Baker Metal Building and another parking lot on the corner. And here is a sketch of the building, the proposed elevation on 65th Street. There is a parking garage on the east side and the residential entrance on the west This is the rear of the building towards Peabody Lane. And this is the east elevation of the building, which would face towards what's currently the parking lot. The west side of the building would be against the Baker Metal Building. Proposed ground level is mostly parking with a small residential lobby and also bike parking as well. The podium level would be residential with open space in the center area of that. The third level would also be residential, open to the open space below, as well with the fourth level. This is in the medium-high-density residential zoning district where multi-unit residential is permitted, and it's also in the North Hollis District overlay, which doesn't modify permitted uses but does slightly modify setback requirements. For zoning analysis, the floor area ratio, or FAR, in this circumstance, the base is 1.2 with a bonus available of 1.6. The proposed project is about 1.5. For residential unity, the base is up to 50 units per acre, which would equate to 20 units on this property, with a bonus of up to 60 units per acre, which would equate to 24 units on this property. And applicant is proposing 24 units. Building height base is 30 feet with up to 55 feet for a bonus, and the applicant is proposing 42 feet. For building height, the southern elevation has a height limit of 30 feet because it borders a medium residential district where the height is capped at 30 feet. So it has to step up at a 45-degree angle from the middle of Peabody Lane. And from what the applicant has shown, it appears to comply with this standard. In consideration of what's around it in terms of building height, the project area is highlighted here in red, and the proposed project is 42 feet 2 inches tall. Next to it, the Baker Metal Building, that's an existing building of 43 feet 10 inches, and it's approved for residential development, but it'd be reusing the existing building, so the height of that would not change. So the west is Glass House Project, and that project towards the west along Hollis is up to 55 feet tall, but closer to the Greenway, it slopes to 33 feet. Across the street at Liquid Sugar, the facade of the building is about 50 feet tall. At Oliver Loff's, it's about 46 feet tall. And Catty Corner, it's about 45 feet tall. So this proposal is slightly shorter than most of all of those buildings. For parking, 1.5 spaces are required per unit because all of the units are two or more bedrooms, and 0.25 spaces per unit are required for guests, which results in 42 spaces, and the applicant is proposing 42 spaces. For bicycle parking, requirement is one space per unit plus one space per every four guest cars, which results in 27 spaces, and applicant is proposing 48. For setbacks, pardon me, in the RMH zone, there is a five-foot front setback, which this proposal is consistent with, three-foot interior sides, and 15-foot rear setback. And this application, as presented today, would need modification or variance as proposed because it does not meet those requirements. It's also part of the NH overlay zone, which it appears to comply with. It dictates the setback from the street to the front building face. And Baker Metal, there's no south setback. Comparatively, the Baker Metal Building, pardon me, does not have a south setback. It's an existing nonconforming building, so it does not have a setback, whereas this building requires one unless a variance is granted. For open space, 40 square feet of private open space is required per unit, and this requirement is exceeded, and 20 square feet of common open space per unit is also exceeded. For court dimensions, the minimum court dimensions this proposal is consistent with. It's also consistent with being open to the sky, but not all of the units appear to open onto the court. For landscaping, at least 10% of the site must be landscaped, which would be approximately 1,725 feet. The front setback provides about 725 square feet, and podium level could provide the additional landscaping. And landscaping details have not been submitted at this time since it's a preliminary proposal right now. For the development bonus, there's 100 bonus points required to build the 24 units because it maximizes the bonus available. There's many eligible bonus categories, as you're probably familiar with, including public open space, sustainable design, public improvements, utility undergrounding, transportation demand management, and a variety of other options as well. Major design review would be required for this project, and it must conform to the Emeryville Design Guidelines and the North Hollis Area Urban Design Program. Because it's a preliminary stage, the project hasn't been evaluated for conformance at this point. This project was reviewed by the Interdepartmental Staff Meeting Development Coordinating Committee, otherwise known as DCC, on February 25th. At that meeting, staff noted that modifications were needed to meet FAR and parking requirements, and those changes have been made. The applicant was also advised to meet with building and fire before revising, submitting any revised plans. Street and sidewalk improvements will be required. Trash room and waste collection details are needed. A transportation study will be required for this project, and staff noted that there are some unusual floor plans and unlabeled rooms submitted so far. So again, issues to be considered this evening are which public benefits should be included, feedback on the design of the project and design of the units, are setback variances justified, and are there any circulation, transportation, or parking considerations? The applicant also has a presentation this evening, so I'm available for questions or if you'd like to wait until after the applicant presents.
Any questions of staff?
I have a few. You mentioned in our staff report, can you explain the potential noncompliance of the courts that's on page three of the staff report, and something you mentioned just a couple slides back, that maybe not all units look onto the court? I'm not quite sure. Back, forward, yeah.
Grab the staff report.
I can explain that. If you want to bring up the floor plan, just one of the sample floors.
Thank you, Trey.
The court requirement in the planning regulations is that opposite any required window, typically bedroom or living room, that if there's a wall facing that window, that the distance between the window and the wall must be equal to at least the height of the wall that's opposite. So you don't get this, like, lightwell canyon effect, and that applies to every bedroom and living room window. So if you have a 20-foot-high wall, say, across from your window, you have to have at least 20 feet to it. And that court has to be open to the sky, and it has to extend for 10 feet on either side of the center line of the window. So you have a lot of situations here where, for example, this living, this bedroom window right here faces onto this wall right here, and I believe there is another kind of a balcony access thing above this. So this is not open to the sky. It would be the total height of this wall that's above this window, and this is the third level. I believe there's one more level above this, so that would be 20 feet. So this distance is supposed to be 20 feet. And if you go down to the podium level, there's probably 30 feet of this wall above this window, so this distance is supposed to be 30 feet, and it's supposed to be open to the sky. So you have a lot of situations here where here, and here, and here. This one might be okay, except I'm not sure it's open to the sky. And over here, you know, on every floor, you've got these windows that just face onto walls. So that's the court requirement.
Thank you. And in the available bonus point options, they say that we have the option for a bike repair facility, and I'm just kind of asking this question rhetorically, but still kind of need an answer, is if they didn't put in a bike repair station or room, but they put in actual bike lockers, would that somehow qualify, or if it's not specifically listed as a bonus, is it not available?
I believe it's a bike station.
Right, that's what it says, and the thing is a station.
That's like, you know, one of these things.
Repair station or clean station or something that, yeah, I was just, I don't see that here. I don't see where that could be put.
Well, no, it's more like a bike, public bike parking facility.
Oh, okay.
Like at the Ashby-Bart station.
Right, right.
No, that's a bike station.
Okay.
That's what it's talking about.
So then lockers wouldn't fulfill that need, okay.
Lockers for the residents?
Yeah.
No, that wouldn't count.
Okay.
They're required anyway, or some kind of secure bike parking is required anyway.
Okay. And then with the Baker Metal Building being grandfathered in, so to speak, it pretty much doesn't have any setbacks. And when they redid that building, because they were reusing the footprint, setbacks weren't required.
Correct.
Okay, so that necessarily wouldn't be germane to this particular project. And at this time with the East Bay Mud, is it possible for this building to use recycled water for landscaping? Does the water exist from East Bay Mud to this area? I know the Greenway, I think, has it.
I'm not sure if it is for residential at this location.
Yeah, because the...
It would have to be extended. I mean...
I know in our Greenway, we put it on the more southern side of the Greenway, where it ends and goes into Ocean Avenue. I know there's purple things in the Greenway landscaping there, but I don't know if it goes over to 65th or not.
Probably have to be, yeah, probably have to be extended.
Okay. And has the developer been fully apprised of our design guidelines currently? So is it something that they're very aware of and...
They've provided all the links to the relevant documents for the city.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I had a question. This is similar to the court requirement. I noticed that there are a couple of bedroom windows that face other bedroom windows. So do we have any restrictions regarding that as well?
Well, it's the same thing.
Same thing, so it has the same, on the corner...
Look, units that are looking across at each other.
Oh, you mean at a 90-degree angle?
Yeah, so right where you're, bring your cursor down a bit, there's a little, small bedroom window.
Oh, here?
Move over, keep going that way. Yeah, right there, on the corner of that center block of units.
Right there.
Yeah, each of those face, like that one.
Or like right here.
That one faces another bedroom, the one that Sean is pointing at, and, yeah.
There's no rule about bedroom windows that are at a 90-degree angle like that.
The big question is the fact.
It's not a 90-degree angle.
Yeah, the angle isn't the question, it's whether they can face each other for privacy reasons.
Right. There's no rule about bedroom windows facing each other for privacy reasons if they are at a 90-degree angle like that.
I think she's pointing to two that are not at 90-degree angle, or at least that's what they were.
Is this a window right here? Is this what you're, so this is a little window, and then this is a larger window?
Yeah, that window.
So the windows directly cross.
Oh, that would violate the court requirement.
Right.
And then on the other side, it's facing the entrance to...
Right.
If they're directly facing each other, then they need to be separated by the distance that's required by the court requirement.
So the intent of the court requirement is that there be such a distance between the windows that this privacy issue sort of be mitigated?
Yes, it's both for privacy, but mainly it's so that you don't have, you know, lightwell kind of an effect.
Okay.
Does the court requirement apply when you're adjacent to another building, like another property?
Wow.
I mean, I just bring this up because I know, I know some cities have court requirements for living rooms, but they don't have the same requirement for bedrooms because typically you end up running bedrooms like five feet off of the property line along a side property line.
Ours applies to living room and bedroom windows. I think the maximum distance that's necessary is a little bit less for a bedroom. I think it's 40 feet and 50 feet for a living room. But I, there is a loophole, I believe, in our regulations that does not, that would not cover those...
Don't tell us what it is.
I know. I don't think it would cover those units that face the wall on the abutting property. It explicitly says walls on the same property. So that may be something, I mean, the theory is the side setback will take care of that, but actually you don't have a side setback in a lot of the higher-density zones. So that's probably something to add to our list of fixes.
Well, you also can't have openings within certain distance of the property line for building fire code.
Yeah, but that's only three feet usually.
Yeah, that's enough, right?
I have a question. So I'm guessing the floor plans are more correct than the site plan, but when I look at the site plan, the setback on Peabody is being shown as much more substantial than it is on the floor plans.
Well...
I don't think I included that in here, but I think I let the applicant address that.
Well, one thing, I believe, is that the, I think the parking podium extends all the way to Peabody Lane, but the upper levels might not.
Oh, that's what's going on.
It steps back.
I don't think that is demonstrated very well in this elevation here, but, yeah. Sorry.
Sorry.
All right. Thanks, Sarah.
All right, thank you. Oh, and so Mr. Dinar will be presenting this evening.
The new perspectives are available to us, and then...
You mean their presentation?
New drawings that we've submitted.
Sure.
We have this one, and then there should be...
When she will let them know?
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Moshe Dinar. I'm the architect. Thank you for allowing us to present our project. We have been working as we, the date for this hearing neared, and we have some additional studies that unfortunately did not make it to the PowerPoint presentation and also didn't make it to your packets. What we have here is, I can circulate some packets that include the new drawings that we've added and the new computer-developed perspectives that we've added, in addition to the preliminary sketch that you're seeing there.
If you want to walk around and refer to the boards, we can get you a handheld mic.
Right, so you have, if you go here, that's what you're talking about?
Oh, that's what I'm talking about.
So do you press that, and this is the presentation you sent me earlier today?
Oh, okay.
So just press the arrow every time you want to go down.
Okay, very good, all right.
And up if you want to go back, okay?
Oh, I got it, okay.
All right.
Now I got it, all right. So now that I know what to do, thank you. Again, my name's Moshe Dinar, Chair of Moss, members of the Commission. Thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity. As you know, this project is still in its infancy. We are here to show you our first design effort and our most important concepts, the ideas that brought this project forth, and what we would like to achieve. As we looked at the site, we found that some of the areas that have already been developed had a lot of landscaping, had a lot of charm, had a lot of activity, both architecturally, visually, and socially. We find that as you start getting closer to San Pablo, it starts looking more and more like a concrete jungle. And so what we're trying to do is, the first concept was to try to bring back a little bit of that park feeling, a little bit of the greenery feeling, and more of that architectural design look that shows that there's activity behind the walls. So our first, our first concept was to extend the landscaping, set the building back about 10 feet in addition to the sidewalk, and create a landscaped area that is a little bit more substantial than just a planter. Now, what you see in the computer rendering later is just the beginning of this, but the first concept in the sketch was to have maybe that landscaped area be slightly bermed to add some benches to it, to create a sense that you're walking through something a little bit more lush. Also, we tried to provide a 100% family-friendly project. We have a total of nine three-bedrooms and 15 two-bedrooms, and they're all large bedrooms. And the reason for this is that we felt that the ability to provide that would also give us the ability to request that we may be able to go up to the 1.6 FAR, which is allowed with bonuses. We also are intending to provide a green building with recycled products, energy efficiency, and other such amenities. As for the architecture, we tried to reduce the impact of the four-story building by setting the fourth floor back and creating sort of a roof canopy that comes over it, over the balconies, and while at the same time saying that these are open spaces, but they're also protected open spaces. We wanted to have an inviting two-story entrance, which was not like saying, this is private, don't come in here. What we wanted was something that says, this is an inviting place, come visit. So consequently, we have a nicely designed two-story entrance that is happening on the building. Every element on the facade of the building is articulated, especially to denote its function. So the living rooms are in the wider volumes, the bedrooms are, have balconies, the stair towers, there is sunshades on the facade that are specifically expressed within a certain rhythm. And we also have a rhythm of balcony materials that keeps changing so that we, you don't have this continuous look of a building that is repetitive, but rather a building that says, aha, this facade has six families in it. It's not just an apartment building. I'll take you quickly through the, some of the images. This is the first computer visualization study that you're seeing of the original sketch that we produced. Obviously, there's some things that we've learned immediately, is that the fourth floor canopy is a little too deep. We intend to set it back. But basically, we've been able to maintain some of the same architectural and also scale-giving elements that we had in the original design. The ground-level planted area is still left boxy. We would like to get an opinion from you, what you think about doing something a little more interesting, such as a berm, or something a little more, more special. You can see how the entrance is articulated along the facade. We have started thinking about what types of materials we'd like to use, all of them green materials, 100% recycled content. We've started thinking of the type of planter boxes we want, the residential bike lockers. Some of the colors are very preliminary, but we do intend to have porcelain tile up to the first floor in two different tones, or we would like to have maybe the railings be a combination of metal and glass, possibly some wood if we can deal with the issue of Here are the pictures that Sarah has already shown you. Again, you see that the building is designed as a C-shaped building or a U-shaped building. The hope, of course, is that the person who buys the parcel next to it will also build a building with a courtyard in the middle such that, so that you have at least a larger visual courtyard, even though these courtyards would be separated by a property line, but at least there would be the encouragement to create a larger open space visually for both, both buildings. The parking, as Director Bryant explained, the parking goes all the way to, to the back of the property. The residential sets back. And as you can see, the residential sets back. We do have a substantial courtyard. I agree with you that the bedrooms with the windows facing the wall need to be studied. What I'd like to say about this type of unit design that we're proposing here, we've been doing residential and mixed use in the Bay Area for about 30 years. And we find that there are very few situations where we can actually have through units. In other words, these units getting natural light from the front and the back. And that is true of all of them. Most apartment buildings and condominium buildings, you have one solid side, all the light, unless it's a corner unit, all the light comes through from, from the front. There's nothing, the bedrooms on the side get, get nothing. You can't put bedrooms on the side. But because we have this idea that everything should be three bedrooms or two bedrooms, so it's family, we decided to do it this way, and that gives, requires a little bit more frontage than would be normally be required. Now, if you look at the three-bedroom units, I don't, oh, what did I do here? If you notice, the three-bedroom units have a square-ish design. They have a kitchen, dining, and living in the center with a large deck. And then they have a bedroom and a master bedroom suite. They have a third bedroom that borrows light from this space here, which is the space that we need to work on, and I'm sure it'll be probably one of your first comments. But there's a fourth space in the geometry that is almost given to us by the nature of the geometry. And what do we do with this? For the last 10 to 15 years, we are seeing a lot more families, people asking for a place to work at home. We used, we started designing our units with little corners where you could put a computer in. This has actually morphed into an actual extra space in each unit that allows people to work out of their house. Not everybody these days has a full-time job. Many have part-time jobs and would like to, and do additional work at home, consult, bring some additional income. It's, I think it's great to have an extra room, and I understand that there was a question, what are these rooms? What are they? They don't have closets, so could they possibly be, you know, bootleg bedrooms? No. What they really are is something that people really need today, which is a place to work at home. And do so, you know, with dignity, without having to run around with the kids and all that, and have the ability to, to do some, some work at home. And so we are submitting these, these, these units as a prototype of a three-bedroom that we have been using recently that has, it's really a four-axis unit, but, but it has one room that's devoted as kind of a, you choose your use room.
So is the desk that's shown there, is that built in?
No, it would not be built in. It would not be built in. People would have to, their own. But the extra room or bonus room, or whatever you want to call it, its function is to create either a den or a home office, or simply a workspace where a person can take their computer and do some work. So that was, that's the concept.
Okay, but it, but it does meet the definition of bedroom in the, in the planning regulations, right? Maybe the staff can confirm that? I can read the definition if you want.
Okay.
Bedroom means any room having the potential to be, of being a bedroom and meeting the standards of the California... of the California Building Code as a sleeping room.
I think it would, but I don't know that that makes a great deal of difference. I mean, our parking requirements would not change.
Sure.
There's really no, the break for parking is between one and two bedrooms. For one and fewer, it's less, and for two and more, it's greater. But other than that, there's no other regulations that hinge on bedrooms. So whether it's three bedrooms or four bedrooms, I don't really think makes a lot of difference.
Yeah, no, my point is just we should count them as four-bedroom units.
Oh, okay.
Again, I'm not an expert on the Emeryville Planning and Zoning Code, but there are some jurisdictions where a bedroom is defined if it has a closet. We didn't put one in just to give that option. But again, as Director Bryant said, whatever the definition is, we would like to have this option included within our project to create a place where somebody can do some work that is separate from a bedroom, that is separate from a living and a dining room. The rest of the floors are similar. The only thing is that the fourth floor is set back on both ends, and there's a long deck which is partially covered. And these are just the preliminary massing elevations and some more ideas. Right now, this elevation, which would be up against the adjoining new project, presents a situation where there's a substantial amount of blank wall, which might be there for a while until somebody decides to build next door. We would like, even though we can't put windows in it, we would like to come back to you with some sort of an architectural design idea, color idea, that would make it a little bit more interesting and more palatable, rather than having a large blank wall. This is a typical urban problem. What do you do with the property line sidewall that you can't put windows in? So we would like to make a recommendation to you about what we're thinking about. Finally, I'd like to end and then get as much input as possible. We can easily qualify for the 100 points that are required and probably even more in the sense that we have substantial open space, we have 100% family-friendly housing, we have completely concealed mechanical equipment on the roof, utility underground. We will obviously have to create a TDM plan, since a transportation study may be required, and we are committed to sustainable design. If we put all those points together, I think we can easily get the 100 points, if not more. And so we're asking to go up to the 1.6 FAR. And I really appreciate the comments you made about those bedrooms, and that's going to be our first design task tomorrow. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. So is the intent to provide a washer dryer in each unit?
Correct.
And if not, is there an onsite facility planned?
No. Every unit has a washer dryer.
Some of the units I had trouble locating where that was, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, just take a look.
It's kind of a small, again, as I said, it's kind of early in the game, and we don't have enlarged unit plans for you, and, you know, but yes, there is a washer dryer in each unit.
Okay.
Can you explain the garage, the parking structure to me? I don't need to see it, it's just that it shows glazing on the north and south side. So are those going to be windows glazed? And if that's the case, how is the garage going to be ventilated?
No, they are not windows. They're openings, and what we'd like to recommend is some sort of an attractive louver system that is architecturally coherent and attractive. I believe that given the amount of solid wall around that garage, that some mechanical ventilation will be required. But we are also going to put, as I said, high windows. We don't want anybody looking into the garage. But the issue that I brought up earlier is when you have high windows in the garage, what do you do with the wall being underneath it? And typically, that's the ugliest part of apartment buildings. I mean, what do people do? They do concrete block and they paint it. That's not what we want to do. Even if we put porcelain tile on it, it's still going to be a blank wall. That was the idea of trying to bring up the landscaping a little bit higher so that what you're looking at is greenery rather than a garage wall.
I like that whole concept and what you're saying. When you get to that point, whether it's at the final study session or when you come back for approval, I'd like to see what those ventilation things are going to look like. I kind of like, need to see a.
Absolutely.
A full explanation show.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and open the public comment. So it appears that we might have a lot of speakers, so if, maybe if we want to form a line so that we can kind of take one speaker after another quickly, I think that would be prudent. So if someone wants to come forward and get us started, and then others can maybe line up behind them.
So before the speakers start, let me just say, there's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. And please, after you speak, would you go over to the clipboard that's over there by Sarah and sign your name so we can get it for the record? Thank you. After you speak.
After you speak.
Yes.
Are we on the clock? Good evening. My name is Shamsad. I am the owner of Baker Building, adjacent to the project. And I was hoping for a more conducive design in reference to my situation. We were approved to develop that warehouse, and one of the conditions was maintaining the architectural shape of the building, to have industrial look, so-called, for the area as the 1900 century, I mean, 1900 architectural standard of Emeryville. I was hoping that the setback was such then we would keep the shape of the building the same, so as you go by from either side, you'd be able to see the integrity of architecture. And the way it is right now is going to give us a lot of trouble to create anything in that side. And sort of hoping that you folks give it a consideration, perhaps moving the whole project forward, such then there is a space between, or could be used for driveway, or could also allow us to develop that building, because as it is, we're pretty much locked up in there. And I like the project itself, perhaps too massive for the site, but as far as my situation is concerned, I will be need some help. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Renee Brunga. I live on 65th Street at Oliver Loft, and I feel personally very much affected by this project, because I live on the ground floor. We have huge high windows facing 65th Street, right across from this building. So what I'm looking at from my living room or bedroom is an empty lot that will be filled by this massive construction, very high. I would like to know how much light will be taken away by this project, and also my living room goes right out to the, my bedroom goes right out to the street. And it's already pretty noisy at night. Traffic has increased over the years, and I was wondering how this building will affect the noise and the traffic. And so, yeah, these are my probably very personal concerns. Also, if this construction is going on, how long will it probably take? A year or a year and a half? And I would like to get some answers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Felicia Wytak, and I'm actually the owner of the parking lot, which is on the other side of the building and the building that's kitty-corner, that was mentioned in the earlier drawings. So I wanted to first say that that parking lot is a requirement for parking for our office building, which is kitty-corner, so there's no intention to develop that at any time with any other kind of project, because we need that parking lot. But first, I also wanted to say, too, that we like the way the facade looks. It seems to fit in nicely with the neighborhood. I also know that it's very expensive construction, as originally drawn, so I hope you'll be able to, the developer will be able to follow through with making that things look as attractive as they look on the drawings. Then my other question I did have was if this was a rental, or were these condominiums? One concern I have with looking at the large bedrooms that are set up like this is this looks like it might be designed possibly for multiple adult-living environments, which means there will be a lot more cars involved. And so if that's the case, you know, where is the parking going to be? Because that neighborhood has gotten a lot more dense over the last few years, and so parking might be an issue if, in fact, the three-bedroom, almost four-bedroom unit has four adults living in it together, sharing a rental. So that would be a concern. One thing, too, we have with the adjacent parking lot and the development of it seeming to be right to the property line, exactly to the east, as you see on the drawing, is the pathway into our garage. So no construction equipment could be placed on our lot during construction, as we need that for people to get in and out of the parking lot. That's actually the circulation area right there, to come in directly to the east of that project, into our parking lot, and then around to the parking spaces in it. So that would be a concern on any kind of construction scheduling. We cannot lose that, our parking lot, right there for that. And so I think that's pretty much it. But those were some of the concerns I had. Again, we like the way it looks, but know it's pretty dense and are concerned about, you know, the density and the neighborhood and the use of the parking lot for our tenants in the building across the street. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we will bring this back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Keller, do you want to get us started?
Okay, gladly. First of all, I like the project. There seems to be lots to work out, so there'll be lots of homework for you all. I do like the office space. As a person who lives in a two-bedroom unit and has a spouse who works at home, often it's unfortunate that we have to have a guest room that's shared with an office in a space like this. I think it's very current and timely, and I think that, you know, the concerns that it could become a bedroom, I mean, people can turn dining rooms into a bedroom. When my mother was a child, she slept in a dining room. So if that's what people are going to do, that's what people are going to do. In his latest drawings, I saw that they had bike lockers. I'm very much in support of that. I'd like to see at least 12 bike lockers included in this project, but six would be a minimum that I would like to see. These are the exact same lockers I use every day, and they're very useful, and it's nice to know that I always have a place to park and keep my helmet. I have a bike pump in there, and I think they're vital, and they're something we need to look at more in our projects. I do like the berm landscape as opposed to the raised planter bed. I think it's kind of a more graceful and friendly look, and it's more kind of like open. So if that can still be incorporated, as in the first illustration, I really kind of like that. And I'm also really happy, back to the bikes, of the multiple areas that you have bike parking on, the several different floors, like, that's really nice to spread that around. I'm happy with the unit mix. I love that they have nine-foot ceilings. I live with nine-foot ceilings, and it's just kind of an amazing difference than when you live in eight-foot ceilings. So I think that kind of adds or goes to the whole height thing, and we might need to look at that, the variances for that or the conditional uses. I don't have a problem with how some of the bedrooms open onto the public spaces. I've been in places that are unique or different like that, and I think people kind of adapt their lifestyles to that. And I think it's a give and take to get family-friendly sized units. We can't get 100% of what we think would make a perfect family-friendly unit. So I wanted to just address some of the, there wasn't a lot of talk on it, but we did get some emails on parking. I think Emeryville's fairly new parking requirements are kind of more reflective and more of the current thought, more current thoughts of today's parking and concepts, as opposed to the old-school autocentric parking. This plan meets our current guidelines for parking, and I don't think that there's a problem with that. We have to, as a member of Transform, it's a group that's doing a survey on parking, and they actually just finished one at PPP with me. And what they're finding is most places are overparked. My building, PPP, has a five-story parking structure. People don't use it, they park on the street because that's what's convenient. So you could put in 100 parking places in this. If it's more convenient for people to park on the street, they're going to park on the street. But if you plan for cars, we're going to get more cars. If our zoning says 42, I think we need to leave it at 42. I don't want to add more parking for cars. And I really don't envy you. I think this courtyard window thing is going to be real thorn in your side. And I don't, I like to provide options or maybe suggestions, but for this, I simply don't have it, and just maybe working with Charlie and his group, maybe you can come up with some answers. But I wish you a lot of luck in that. Right now, that's it.
Well, I think it's a very interesting project. I like the three- or four-bedroom units, and I questioned some of the sizes of the bedrooms. They look like they're maybe nine feet wide in some of the smaller units. But I think the big problem is going to be the windows looking out into spaces that aren't big enough, and they're covered for the most part. And however, that's going to be resolved, I don't know. But it looks like a killer to me, so I have to see what happens.
I think that the design of the project, I'm really liking the palette that you've chosen, and I think that using sustainable materials is definitely a good way to go, and I really applaud you for heading down that path. Some of the design comments that I do have relate to the layout, really the floor plan. I do really support the 100% family-friendly housing, but I think that the unit, the layout is just a bit repetitive and just needs some work in terms of mixing it up a bit. And then also, if this is going to be 100% family-friendly housing, I think that the common landscape area should incorporate some spaces for people with families. The previous project that you were here for had some examples of that, spaces that could be used for entertainment, and maybe also a play area. There definitely is a challenge with the units that face the courtyard, and particularly the units that have, or their patios are also facing that common landscape area, so you'll definitely need to look at that in terms of allowing some privacy for those units that have patios that are on the common area. And then as far as bonus points, the ones that are priority, in my opinion, would be the sustainable design, the 100% or the family-friendly housing, and underground utility, which I think you mentioned, and alternative energy would be something worth pursuing. Those are my comments.
I think I just need to back up a little bit, because in looking at the need for a variance for the setbacks and looking at our variance regulation, I don't think that I could make findings to support a variance that would allow for the setback to be changed. So I think that that's a big hurdle to get over, because I don't see how there are special circumstances with this piece of property that would justify a variance. So I think that that is one thing that might be a major impact on shaping the project going forward. I do think also, since we put a high value on the Baker Building, that it's true that we would like to see the Baker Building as well. So that's another reason for the setback not to be done away with. I also, especially, I really think the family-friendly aspect is great. I think the sustainability, if you move in that direction, is great. But I would also like to see ground floor units on the street side. There's ground floor units on other places on that street, and I think that activating that street and having some units that open up onto the sidewalk would be preferable to having landscaping or porcelain tile or planter boxes in front of the parking garage. I also agree that the situation, I understand the concept of getting light through from both sides, and I think that's great, but in those hallway areas, I think it's going to be very enclosed and cramped feeling, and I think there, there are also a number of spaces, of the circulation spaces that are kind of narrow and cramped and could be opened up a little bit more. For example, the ground floor lobby where you come from the garage into the, into the lobby area, there's pinch points there, and some of the hallways that go to the exit stairs by the, by the open space are also, have some very narrow pinch points. And I think it'll be great to see something go in on that site. Really, the family-friendly housing is a wonderful thing that I'd like to see move forward, and I think that the, it needs to be, it needs to be pulled in a little bit.
Yeah, I think the, I really feel like the north facade is very strong. I'd like to see the south facade, at least some renderings of it or something that gives us a better example of how that's intended to play out. Seems like the north facade utilizes large overhangs a lot as kind of design elements, and I worry that's going to be pretty dark, being that it's already north-facing, but I don't want to mess with the facade too much in that respect either because I think some of the overhangs and the things you're doing with them are creating some really nice spaces. I want to, I want to repeat Council, or sorry, Commissioner Donaldson's comment about the parking and the street. I mean, I, I see what you're trying to do with the berm, but I think basically what this really needs is, is taking units down to the street level to really activate it. I think what we ended up with here is, is parking, basically a parking garage on both streets that this property borders, and especially on the north side, I don't really feel like that's appropriate. I feel like we should be bringing the units down to the street level and activating that street. As much as we might try to landscape, you know, landscape that issue away, what we end up with is really just a parking garage facing, facing the street. I, I agree, I don't really, I don't really see an argument for the variances regarding the setbacks, in particular, the one along Peabody. I mean, right now, I think there's a single-family home right across the street from this that's a small structure, and to have this, this structure with the garage in particular right up against the property line across the street doesn't seem appropriate. And I, I could see, you know, granted the neighbors to the, to the east, if they don't mind being right on the property line, you being right on the property line, I could see that being okay, but then the ones to the west already express their concerns, and I understand those. Of course, that's only going to buy three feet, but it's something. As far as family-friendly design, I mean, I, I look at the units and I see units with lots of bedrooms, but I also see lots of small bedrooms, and they're all sort of opening off of the common spaces. And then the common spaces themselves are very small. Looks to me like even in the four-bedroom, or three or four-bedroom units, whatever you want to call them, the common spaces only account for about 250 square feet, which I, you know, seems really small to me for a unit of that size. I can't imagine a family having, you know, their kitchen, living room, dining room space that small. Let's see here. And then, yeah, it'd be nice to see, I, I love the large courtyard. I'd like to see what's, what's intended there that's really going to bring people to that space. I think we saw some good examples on the, on the upper, on the roof terrace of the previous project with the barbecue bar lounge area, bocce ball court, the fire table, things along those lines that will actually bring people to that space to utilize it. As far as the bedrooms and the court issue, it's a conundrum because frankly, I, I disagree with the, with the court requirement with regard to the bedrooms. I don't really see why that's so important, and it ends up really kind of shaping spaces in a way that I don't think is necessary. And it sort of contradicts what's typically done when you have one building up against another. So I, anyway, I understand it with regard to living spaces, you know, living room spaces. You don't want your living room facing a wall or your kitchen necessarily facing a wall, but a bedroom isn't a space that you go in to stare out the window. And I, you know, it's nice to have some natural light, but most of the time you're in your bedroom, it's not when the lights are, you know, when the sun's out. So it's just a, it's unfortunate, and I'm, look forward to seeing how you work that out with the, with the staff. That's it.
I'll just say that I agree with just about every other comment that's been said. Just to kind of summarize them, yeah, I, I agree that the, I think the, the north elevation is pretty strong. I generally kind of like the materials and colors that you're showing. I also, I, in, in reviewing the variance findings, I, I don't see how we could make them in this case. What else? I will say the, the one other thing that I want to talk about is the, oh, I probably should talk about the bonuses. The, as far as what bonuses we might want to see, what bonus points we might want to see in award, I think, you know, kind of green building components would be great. You know, it'd be great to see a lead gold building, for example, or, you know, some other components like that. The, I think we, you know, might, I, I am a little hesitant to award points for family-friendly housing just because of kind of the direction things are going, even though it's in the code, but I, I think under this scenario, you know, you're provo, you're proposing 100%, and I think that's, you know, is beyond what will probably ever end up being required. So I applaud you, and I think we could award some points for that. I do actually want to ask staff, is there, is there, there's no public open space requirement for this project or publicly accessible open space?
Oh, you mean accessible to the general public?
Yes. Don't, don't we have that in some instances?
No, not for residential projects.
Oh.
For non-residential projects, there's supposed to be a certain amount of common open space for the, you know, people who work there. And then there is, I think, if it gets over a certain size, then there's a certain amount of public open space also, but for residential, there's no public open space required.
Oh, okay. Then the, one other thing I want to say actually is about the units, that one of the reasons I was asking about the, that bonus room is that I, I think in, in theory, it's a great idea. It's, you know, I, I would love to have such a room that could be, you know, used for anything I chose. And I think it's a great amenity, but in, in this example, I, I think that one of the thing, one of the issues I think with these units is that in all of them, the, the shared spaces are, are, look very small to me. None of them are showing, shown as accommodating a full-size sofa. They're all shown with love seats, and so I think on those, those units, I would rather see that space re-appropriated to the, the common living area to make it function more, more appropriately and more versatility for, for a family. I think in, in the situation they're shown in now, you know, you could have a family living there, but not everyone would be able to, to sit and watch TV at the same time in the living room, for example. So I, you know, it, it pains me a little bit to say it because I, I love that amenity of having that, that bonus room, that flexible room, but, but in this case, I see those living spaces as, as very constrained, and I, I think the space would be much better appropriated towards those. So I think that more, oh, and I, yeah, I do think you are going to have to just try and see what you can do to, to meet the court requirement. But I, yeah, I do think that's going to inform the, the design largely. So that concludes my comments.
Chair Moss, could I just make a comment on the court requirement? As I think it came up during the previous study sessions on the Nady site, 6701 Shell Mount, where we pointed out that some of those units didn't appear to meet the court requirement. Unfortunately, the way the code is currently written, there's no wiggle room in that court requirement. It's a pretty hard and fast rule. That's another thing that's on our list of fixes where we need to maybe provide a little bit of flexibility, maybe it's a certain percentage, or maybe there could be some discretion of the commission to adjust it a little bit, although this, I think, is a rather extreme example. And, but Commissioner Gunkel also makes the point that, well, maybe it shouldn't apply to bedrooms. I mean, all, the, the ones I'm familiar with have applied to bedrooms, so I don't know. But at any rate, currently, under the current regulations, there's really no wiggle room. So if you wanted to approve something that didn't comply, that too would require a variance. So in addition to the setback variance, you'd also need a court requirement variance.
Yeah, I think I remember that from the Nady project, that it was very hard and fast. All right, does, does anyone have any other comments on this project?
Yeah, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Yeah, come, come, please, come back up. Yes.
Thank you. I thought it was all closed, but I, I just want to say there's a few things that are of concern to you and are obviously very important to us and also have been said by some of the speakers. The Baker Building is a very large building. It's one big giant metal building. It's right on the property line. It doesn't matter what architect or what developer comes in, it's going to be very hard to be able to utilize the site that we have and set enough space to create an access road for the Baker Building. The Baker Building unfortunately is an existing building. It will have to deal with its own environmental planning and, and circulation issues. For us to take 20 feet away of our site to provide an access, a common access road of some sort, would pretty much nullify the, our ability to do anything on that site. For one thing, we need 42 cars. That fills up the whole first floor. I mean, there's certain realities that must be understood, and as much as we would like to respect this gentleman's request, it is impossible. If we're going to set our building back so far, our courtyard will be gone, we won't get enough parking. So this is a very important issue, and it's, it's, the Baker Building is a very interesting building. I actually like the building. I like seeing something that large there. But at the same time, it, by virtue of its size and the fact that it has no windows, it poses a problem to any designer, I'm sorry, not you, any designer that builds against it.
Chair Moss, could I just chime in here for a second?
Yeah.
I don't think you should separate too much on this concern. I didn't hear any of the commissioners raise it.
I agree.
It was a public speaker who raised it. And I would also just like to point out that the Baker Metal Building has an existing entitlement that was granted years ago for its reuse by this planning commission, well, not this planning commission, but by the, yeah, some of, some of these planning commissioners. And that entitlement does not provide any kind of access on the adjacent property.
No.
It's just, you know, it's on its own property. So.
And, and those entitlements are still active?
Yes, that, that's because, for better or for worse, they were all wrapped together with the five townhouses that are currently under construction on Ocean Avenue because it's all one piece of property. So it's all covered by one-use permit. So by virtue of those townhouses now being virtually completed, the entire project is vested. So the Baker Metal Building can be, you know, redone pursuant to those entitlements, but it doesn't have anything to do with the property next door.
So the only variance we're talking about is there needs to be a three-foot setback from the Baker Mill into this building?
Yes, and, and if I could just say, I don't know if we said this in the staff report, but I think that variance could be justified. It's similar to the situation you had on Doyle Street.
Right.
Where the project had a 20-foot blank wall.
Right.
Right, and you know, and what's the point of having a three-foot wide canyon?
Canyon, because the Baker Metal Building on that side, on the, on the east side, is not proposed to have windows, correct?
No, I don't believe they'd be able to.
If I remember right, it didn't have the windows. So, so, yeah, so we're going to have a three-foot canyon that's between two solid walls, and what's the point of that?
Although I don't believe you could make the same kind of finding of unique circumstance on the.
Peabody.
East side or on Peabody.
Yeah. Yeah, well, also, similar is not a, not a great word when you're talking about variance findings, so.
Actually, if I may just, the units that face, that the rear faces the Baker Building are almost 15 feet back. So we actually do have a setback there. Where we don't have a setback is where we have blind walls. So we, we do offer somewhat of a setback, but that's really about as much as I, I think as can be expected. Thank you, and I'm sorry to interrupt your conversation.
That's, that's all right. Thank you. All right. So with that, are there any other comments regarding this project? Okay, all right. Great. Thank you.